I now call the January 9th, 2018 work session of the Riverton City Council Order at 7:01. And pledge allegiance, Councilmember Peterson, and a prayer by Councilmember Hancock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for the opportunity we have to meet here as a council and city staff. We ask that you please help us that we can have our minds enlightened to the needs of the citizens whom we serve and that we can be able to have discussions that will be enlightening and productive and that we will be able to do our best to serve this city. We thank thee for all of our many blessings and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present. Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmembers Gibbon and Godey from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye declared that we have a quorum. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Your Honor, make a motion when you approve the agenda is written.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Fiscal health report, Mia Harris.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. It's a privilege and a pleasure to get to speak with you this evening about our fiscal health with the city. First of all, I want to apologize when we sent out the preliminary packets that you only received one page of my report. I learn something new every day in my job and in this instance, it was something as technical as making sure that you save all copies of the pages of the report on the PDF document. So I sent that as a follow-up. I hope you all have received that.
Yes.
So I just want to go over the report that I did send to you and then visit with you a little bit about some budgetary items that we might want to consider as we move forward into the fiscal year. The first page is provide, all pages provide you a copy of the actual revenues and expenditures that we have received year-to-date for our fiscal year budget. And I'm not going to go through each of these by line item, but I am going to point out at the bottom of the report that's in, highlighted in bold, the actual difference. So when we compare our revenues to our expenditures that we have received so far year-to-date, in the general fund, we are ahead. We have received $304,867 more than what we have expended out of the general fund. Okay? The page two for the water fund, generally, again, our enterprise funds are pretty much self-serving funds. The money that we receive from those funds are derived from services that we charge for and then the expenditures help to provide the support for those services such as salaries and wages for our employees and then, of course, any other costs of doing businesses, including your fuel and insurance, different things like that. So for the water fund, we are ahead $298,314 year-to-date. The next page for the wastewater fund, we are ahead $104,763 of our projections. And for the sanitation fund, our revenues outpaced our expenses by $163,364. And then for the airport fund, our revenues did not outpace our expenses thus far on the airport fund and that's differences $335,951. This includes all capital and operations. And then finally, on the last page for our minimum revenue guarantee, the difference is less $77,926, meaning that our expenses have outpaced our revenues in the MRG. So I want to touch base with regard to, point out a couple of things with regards to this report. One thing that we always want to bear in mind is that the airport fund, although it is categorized as an enterprise fund, it's funded and subsidized by the general fund. So when we show that we're behind $335,000 out of the airport fund and we are ahead $304,000 in the general fund, simple math would show you that we are still behind on our revenues versus expenditures and that total amount is $31,083.87 is the combined difference there. The other report, the other fund, the airline minimum revenue guarantee, I do show that we have a difference of revenues less $77,926 and I wanted to point out that that's a matter of timing between our reimbursements versus expenses. Those are all funded by reimbursable grant dollars and so we have to expend the money prior to receiving the revenues back. Does anybody have any questions thus far? Yes?
In regard to the minimum revenue guarantee, where do the monies that Lander and Fremont County contribute and the city of Riverton for that matter, do they show up under just program revenue or how does that?
It shows up under, excuse me, I have to pull the report here so I can look at it. It does. It shows up under fast program revenue.
Okay.
And the city of Riverton, we carried over $200,000 from last year. The city of Riverton contributed $200,000. The city of Lander was $100,000. Fremont County was $50,000 and then we did receive an additional $3,000 from the casino to help fund that. Okay? Another piece of the report, just something that I wanted to point out for budgetary items moving forward. As you remember, when we went through the budget cycle, we budgeted that we were going to make some reserves for, transfers from our reserves, reserve accounts this year to fund a lot of our capital projects and also to provide the subsidy to the airport. And those reserves are going to be coming from the general fund. The total amount that we budgeted that we planned to transfer was $455,938. So keeping that in mind, we also budgeted $40,000 in the airport fund for the Fremont County Commission. The commissioners have historically provided cash to the city of Riverton to help fund the airport as well. This year, they opted to not do that. So that is money that, revenue that we plan on receiving that we will not be receiving from the commission. And then lastly, we budgeted some funds for Great Lakes Aviation. We budgeted $24,000. Mathematically speaking, we've received everything that we're going to receive from them with the exception of what we've billed. We do have money that we have billed to them and it is showing in our revenue numbers. They have yet to pay that. We are continuing to work on that as well. So if you take the total amount that we plan to transfer from reserves along with our shortfalls on our revenue budgeting, we're looking at $513,000 in expenditures. Okay? And of course, we budgeted that we were going to transfer 455. So that's the bad news. The good news is, is we did receive some unanticipated revenues, so we received some additional money that we did not budget for. We budgeted $1.18 million for supplemental funding and due to a formula change that the legislature had passed, we are receiving more money in supplemental funding this year than we budgeted. We are going to be receiving an extra $163,000. Additionally, we received a reimbursement from the state of Wyoming for the Riverview Road construction project and that total was $20,718. I'm working through the budget and we're grasping at ways that we can save money. Where can we find these unanticipated revenues? Another one that we had located was of, we are going to save $3,200 of the city's portion from airport projects this year. And part of that is just due to the, that one of our, one particular project came in under what we had budgeted and so we were able to use some of that money also. And then lastly, we received a reimbursement from the FAA for some airport localizers. It was a project that had taken place a couple of years ago, $35,100. So our unanticipated revenues total $222,079. So our net difference that we're looking at is $291,359 that we would like to be able to find without having to transfer money from reserve to cover these other items that we budgeted for. So keeping that in mind, we carry, right at the end of December, we had a balance in the general fund operating account of about $1.59 million, $1,591,000. And then our funds held in reserve is $1.189. So if we actually take the difference of the $291,000 out of our general fund operating account and not physically move it from a reserve account, it's going to leave us a balance of approximately $1.2 million, which is exactly two months' worth of operating. So that's kind of where we sit with that. Now, some things to keep in mind, when we budgeted the $455,000 transfer from reserves, it was to cover capital projects. So one of the capital projects in the majority, the bulk of the capital projects was obviously $738,000 that we would, that we would be covering for North Federal Boulevard. That's the big ticket item as far as trying to find savings or where will we not be transferring money from reserves? It could possibly be that, but we have to keep in mind that money is going to need to be spent at some time, so we want to try to capture that this year because, of course, we're going to need it again for next year. The airport fund wasn't quite so bad. We had budgeted that we would transfer $47,000 from the airport fund for capital projects, but if you remember, I just had mentioned that we have recovered about $38,300 in unanticipated revenue for the airport, so that doesn't look quite as bad. So where we sit today is good. However, looking into the future, we just want to be sure that we're tightening down a little bit so that we're not having to transfer some money from reserves at the end of the fiscal year. Did you have any comments?
No.
Questions?
Questions?
Has our unanticipated snow clearing caused any budgetary problems?
No, not at this time it hasn't. We're pretty early in the season on that.
Okay. So we did, but we did, when we passed the budget, we did plan to move some money from cash into, so what you're trying to do is to avoid that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Good, Mike?
Okay. So you said we had budgeted to move $400,000 out of reserves, you said, into operating funds for different projects?
For capital, yes.
And you're saying we aren't going to need to do that because you've come up with unexpected revenues of 300 and something total?
So we've decreased the number of, of the amount that we would have to transfer based on unanticipated revenues, but we're still looking at a difference of $291,000 that at the bottom line at the end of the day.
Probably still going to have to do that.
We may have to do that, yes.
Okay. So we're still ahead of where we thought we would be?
About 110.
By 100 and something thousand.
Yeah. In the budget, we are, yes. But it's my hope that, of course.
I understand. It'd be all great if we didn't have to move it because then it would still be there to use for something else.
Absolutely.
And then refresh my memory on the North Federal where that project is not going to have any or at least very little expense during this fiscal year?
That is.
That money would just get moved over into next year?
It would, yes. Any money that we could capture, that we anticipated having to spend for this year, we would like to, I would make the proposal that we carry that over. We could actually, we already have a reserve for North Federal line item in the general fund, so at the end of the year, if we come out ahead, I would, I would make that recommendation that we go ahead and drop it into that reserve for assigned funds.
But we also had some revenues coming in that won't be there because until the road's built, they don't give you the revenue either, right?
That is correct.
The grant revenue.
That is correct. And construction is scheduled to start in March, so we're only going to see three months.
A little bit of expense in this fiscal year. Okay. Thank you.
So the $700,000 for the, for North Federal, is that for just this year?
That is what we budgeted.
Is that the total project?
No, the total project is $4.6 million, but we budgeted $738,000 for this year.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, that was prior to them telling us they weren't going to start until, because they were going to start in the fall, but they moved it to the spring.
Correct. Okay.
Okay. Any further questions for me?
I know we had talked a little bit about change in sales tax revenue because of the change in the, actually capturing some of that from online purchases. Has that kind of been up to what was expected?
We did increase the budget on our sales tax revenue from 1.8 million to $2 million this year. And actually, right now, I can tell you exactly where we are on it. Soon as I can find it here. I believe we were at 55% of budget, but I'm looking. There it is. Actually, we were at 48% of budget. We budgeted $2 million and at this point, we've brought in $962,000. This is at the, as of the end of December. I do know that we received the sales tax numbers for January and it put us at about 55%.
I thought I saw something like that in a report.
And January would be 50% mark?
No, January is slightly over, of course, because it's November.
Right on.
We're, we're pretty close, yeah.
Thank you, Mia.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're bet. City Administrator, land sale discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and Council, one of the things that has come up just recently that hit my desk that I thought after speaking with the mayor and a couple others was a worthy discussion point for council was a discussion of the land up by the airport. Currently, there's just short of 32 acres up there, some of it divided, some of it less so, that is currently being listed for commercial sale. Those property lots sold in 2012 and 2013, but then has, have been relatively stagnant since then. We have been re-upping our existing contract since 2013 when it originally expired, I believe. And at this time, I wanted to facilitate a discussion with you about your desires to move forward, either to continue listing it, seek additional bids or proposals for listing it, which is a common practice, approximately every so often, there is a, there's a practice of going and doing, doing an RFP for those services. You see it in engineering services, in any, any type of services that are generally provided. As such, I was unfamiliar with this particular, with this particular set of, set of lots. And also, this council, from the timeframe that I'm looking at, hasn't actually had the ability to have the discussion. As such, I wanted to present to you the information we have today. If you look into your packet, you'll find that we have multiple lots listed, multiple lots shown at the bottom of each of those pages. So going to the first one, you have approximately 4.33 acres and then attached to that, you have the Fremont County Assessor's Office report. Now, I've also been told that the market value on that is probably not absolutely appropriate, but it gets us in the ballpark. The same can be said for the second lot, 3.21 acres. And then as we move along, there's a 6.54 acre lot, a 11, and the largest one, which is, I believe, closest to the airport, is the 11.8 acre lot and rounded out with the six acre lot. I will, from my understanding and Public Works Director Butterfield can probably discuss a little bit more than I can if you have particular questions, but some of the discussion around that largest lot has been with commercial development. When I was, when it was brought to my attention, that has been some of the discussion in the past is either providing for a cul-de-sac or cutting up that particular area and then providing it for commercial development. Keeping in mind, anything that council does in terms of marketing, it doesn't, doesn't guarantee a land sale. The council must accept bids accordingly. Our current process that is required by state law also says, I believe, that economic development, land can be used for economic development or transferred between governmental agencies, if memory serves. As such, that is generally the overview of those. I would invite any questions or comments and it ultimately would ask direction as how we wish to proceed.
I guess my only question, Tony, is have we had any negative issues with the current marketing provider? Or, and so, I mean, I understand you're just sort of bringing this up so that we all have had a chance to discuss it and, or are we required to rebid it every so often or anything like that or?
Your Honor?
Good.
Councilman, no, that we are not, one, required to rebid it. You can continue to move along. And two, as I did, wanted, I wanted to point out both in my memo and now, there haven't been any noted problems with the individual. It was simply because of the timeframe, the turnover on council that had happened so it wasn't discussed, that I thought it was worth at least a five-minute conversation at a work session. That way, but as far as moving forward, I haven't found anything within the agreement that is completely out of line. There are costs for lease payments if we decide to lease it and what we owe to that, to that firm as well as sale. So we haven't real, to my knowledge, we haven't had any bites on it as of late in the last couple of years, but, I mean, we've been in kind of a downturn to some extent, so that's expected.
I guess I'm comfortable with renewing the contract with Home Source.
I agree.
Okay?
I agree.
All right. It's just an issue that we had, Tony and I had talked about this, we just thought, the original, the original way we got hooked up was, we did have a request for a proposal from local realtors and we just wanted to make sure that we were still happy with that arrangement before we signed a new agreement with them. Okay?
Your Honor, don't you feel that that property would have greater value as the airport, traffic moves up? As the traffic in the airport moves up?
Oh, yeah. I would, yeah. It is, yeah. When people, there's more people using it. I was up there today and there's a car dealership up there that I hadn't seen before.
And you said yippee skippy.
See?
Yeah.
And so, well, it was a building that was there, but they turned it into a car dealership. So a big lot full of pickup trucks. Okay? So, so at any rate, there are things that happen in Riverton once in a while in positive directions. Okay? Can't just focus on, on the empty Kmart building and an empty Safeway building, empty, empty motel.
Yeah.
Okay? And.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, that's terrific. So I think we're, I think we're okay doing what we're doing. Okay? But we just wanted to make sure that council.
Do we need a motion on that, Your Honor?
No, we've got consensus.
Okay.
Where are you?
Your Honor, then as such, we'll, I will execute the agreement for another extended year and unless anybody brings it up, I'll continue to execute it annually. So, thank you.
Yeah. The only issue there, you know what, what originally Bill Urbikite was trying to do was that he wanted, he wanted people to come up there and build buildings on that and with the city retaining ownership of the land. Well, what that would mean then, you see, is that every month, there'd be a rent check come due into the city, which would make up the difference on the airport budget between what we're spending out of the general fund now and, and what the airport actually brings in. And so he was looking at all that land up there as revenue enhancement for the airport. And so we kind of have that with the DCI building. You see, the city still retains ownership of that building. They pay, they're making the payments on the loan that it took to build the building. Someday, it'll be ours. Okay? He tried to do that with the air, with the hangars as well, to say, well, here's the land, you can come, we'll, we'll let you rent this for next to nothing. Okay? But 20 years from now, the building is ours. That many takers. Nobody, nobody.
I don't know why that would be.
But that's the way, but you see, that, that's a very common practice in other places, but the challenge there is, is that, is that there's a lot of demand for hangar space and people have to, have to do it. And I'm not sure, there must be something about leases in business where you can deduct that as an operating expense.
Yeah.
That might make a lease situation more attractive than actually owning the building.
I, I think the Casper Airport owns a big chunk of that stuff around them and they lease out a bunch of those buildings and.
That's right.
Again, it gives them some good supplemental income to offset.
Yeah. And they just build a great big huge hangar and, and that's certainly something that might be on the horizon for us, is that if we want a plane to overnight in, in Riverton, it may be necessary for us to have a hangar for that aircraft.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So the next item on the agenda is franchise agreement discussion. City Administrator?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and Council, one of the things that is coming before you in the very near future as far, as soon as we can get over some of that, some of that, those fun little legal hurdles with regard to certain language, is a new franchise agreement for an internet service provider. Because that's coming forward, because they come forward so rarely, again, this was one of the items we felt was worthy of discussion and, if you will, a little bit of education. I'm unfamiliar with how familiar everybody on council is with the different aspects of a franchise agreement. I like to describe it as a little bit of a prenup that basically details how you're go, how anybody within that agreement is going to behave and how they're going to notice each other, how they're going to be, how they're going to pay for certain things, how certain things can be moved and the like. And so what I wanted to do, just briefly, is to provide for some of the categories that within the, within this memo that denote the different categories we go through that we negotiate and then allow for some questions because that's coming forward. When you, when you see this, it'll be something different. One of the reasons it's so different is because of the timeframe. These generally run anywhere from 10 to 25 years. As such, the likelihood of one person still sitting on council, even if they begin when the first thing they do when they walk onto council is go through a franchise agreement, the likelihood of them seeing it 15 years later is probably not very high. Some of, as such, we wanted to make sure that we went through it. We, the items, I'm sure everybody has looked at this, so I denoted the term already. These generally tend to be non-exclusive. We recommend they never be exclusive simply because then the city has some requirement to make to enforce that and not allow others. It's a competition. So competition drives savings and that's probably a good thing, so we didn't, tend to recommend that. One of the major items that is always discussed is rate. The rate on most of these franchise agreements run between 1 and 6 to 7%. Ours run between 1 and 6%. We have approximately five of them, I believe, and they run everywhere from Rocky Mountain Power to the, to cable. You'll also see them in gas, depending on where you're at. You can see other ones, including the satellite and the like. It just really depends on what is available within the community. The attachments are denoted as pole attachments generally. These are things, these are instances where the poles that are actually built can be used by other service providers and that is usually denoted as a revenue source to the city to some extent. You can say, okay, you can have pole attachments, but they tend, they can be 25% of that revenue then goes to the city. Or you can require that anybody on those poles or those facilities has a franchise agreement with the city. It's really up to, it's really up to the council. I denoted behavior, how we, how, how we interact, how we provide notice, times. One of the other items that is always worth looking at is the relocation provisions within it, which means if we move a street or we have to move a street or we have to do infrastructure work, who is responsible for it? Most of the time, I have seen where if we have to legitimately move a street, that, the movement of those facilities come at the cost of the provider, not the municipality. So an item to keep in, to keep in mind, relocation or, and then there are other term, other items or instances where relocation is the responsibility of the city, might be at our preference or hey, we just want to put something else here that's a little different. Those vary per agreement and, again, are up to you. Records inspection has to do with the ability for us to make sure that things are being done the way that we've agreed to. And insurance, governmental immunity are all very common. Renewal periods tend to be automatic and for a period of between one and five years. They can be negotiated longer, they can be, they could, I'm, I'm sure there's a number of provisions, usually they're between one and five years and with the requirement, with a number of requirements that after a certain number of renewals that something else kicks else kicks in to make sure that people start talking, so it doesn't run in perpetuity. And finally, of course, revocation and transfer. As these individ, as these groups, or businesses, utilities are putting a great deal of infrastructure and money, investing that and burying it commonly, the idea of pulling it up, or moving it, or affect, not only affects their revenue stream, but also their capital investment. So, any, any revocation would require them to remove it, and as such, is, tends to be a pretty long section with a lot of steps to jump through. I tried to go through this pretty quickly, because I've already discussed it within the memo, but we are currently, as we are currently working with an internet service provider, one of the, this is just, again, one of those items we wanted to bring your, bring to your attention, but, and, and, and maybe have a little bit of discussion, or answer any questions you might have. The, the next one that we're working with is actually with Wind River Internet, and that's something we're going to be discussing, we're still working through it, but that is a tribal entity, so there'll be other, there, there's a potential, and are, is provided as other sections dealing with tribal sovereign immunity. So, that's going to be something that I've never personally worked with, but I was smart enough to call our attorney and make sure our language was correct before we presented it. The idea when we negotiate these is to first and foremost, bring forward something that staff is comfortable with, that we think that is, is very tenable, and that should be, can be recommended. In the case that we cannot come to that, to that agreement, they can probably bring something forward to you, and ask you to consider it, at which point, we would provide our comments. I have never seen that happen, but I've heard of it happening. That is all that I have for right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or... Sir?
Mike?
Tony, of the franchise agreements we have in existence right now, I know the rates sort of vary, and then when do these come up for renewal? Are we going to try to equalize these, so that we don't have one at two, one at six, and that kind of stuff?
Yes, Your Honor, if I may. They are going to come up at various times. They're going to come up over the next five years, they'll probably be, I know there'll be another one. And at that point, I would recommend that we normal, that we do normalize those rates. Having it consistent across the board tends to make it simple, and honestly, does expedite the negotiation process. One of the things to keep in mind on rates is that the utility provider isn't paying it, they're passing it along. On the, the way that the percentage is collected, or calculated, is based on an addendum that says, okay, we can charge, take an internet service provider, you get a basic cable package, it's this much, and then your equipment rental is this much, and these are the things, but we're not going to say governmental fees, those you don't calculate in there. So, ultimately, by standardizing that, letting everybody know, on the front end, this is what it has been, everybody's at this level, one, it provides for equity, which I think is kind of suggested in our conversation, but also expedites our process and negotiation.
Kyle?
Last time we negotiated a franchise fees was with a local telephone company. Wasn't a lot of bargaining room, because 75 percent of their circuits are empty. It appears that people had gone to cell phones versus landlines. My question is, on the internet, there are, I don't know how many internet providers, but I don't know the, the, I don't see why there would be a franchise fee for internet when there's, there's so many of them, and normally, a franchise fee comes to exclusivity. We have one power company, we have one gas company. So, I don't see that we've got an exclusivity with internet.
Your Honor, if I may? The purpose of the, the purpose of the franchise agreements is for them to occupy city right-of-way. So, they're paying for the privilege, or the ability to occupy property within the city limits they do not have to buy, and they agree to maintain it according to the agreement. You'll, you do franchise agreements with telephone companies, you could do multiple ones. Power companies, gas companies tend to be one or two. I've seen multiple gas companies that provide to a community, and therefore, they both have franchise agreements. It really depends on what the market drives at that particular area. So, with an internet, with an internet, or with, when fiber is laid, or any, any sort of infrastructure, that is ultimately what drives the agreement. If for some reason, they're broadcasting from outside of the city limits via short microwave or microburst, or what have you, and they were to come in, come into the city, they're not occupying our right-of-way, it would be slightly, it would be more difficult to impose that. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but...
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so the proposal that we're getting from Wind River Internet is that they're going to lay a fiber optic line in Riverton, in our right-of-way?
Right.
Yes, yes, Your Honor, that is correct.
Okay, and so, they're, they're trying to hook up the, if I remember, 12th Street Medical Clinic, and the, and the High Plains Power Building?
Your Honor, the, the information that I have from them says they are going to be hooking up those two, and then one additional, but also that the amount of fiber that they're bringing in would, wouldn't be a single attachment. It would, I believe, it's something like 96 pair.
Would allow for other people to tie into that same line.
Correct, and it could be marketed. The other consideration is that other internet companies could ultimately rent space, or dark fiber from them, in order to provide service within a community. So, they, if they're only using 20 percent of their actual, of their actual fiber in the ground, they could lease that other space. So, one of the things that you will likely see, as I discussed, pole attachments. Pole attachments are the, are a more traditional way for those lines to be run, whether it be cable or telephone, whereas now, it's those same facilities that we discuss are more in terms of the internet cable that is going through the community, because multiple users could actually, you could get a Breznan, and a Charter, and a Spectrum, all on this, all in the same fiber cable.
They're all the same company.
I'm not familiar with their breakup, but you could get multiple companies within the same one. I'm going to have to read up, and make sure I'm, have all the franchises done.
Hey? Any other questions? Comments? Good, thank you. The next thing is goal-setting session discussion.
Your Honor, I'm getting my practice. One of the, one of the things that's come up recently through our staff conversations is our goals, is our annual goal-setting. Obviously, this council has done it in the past, so it's, I don't need to really go into what it is so much as a couple of suggestions that during our discussions came up, and I thought was worth your consideration. One is the timeline. My understanding from speaking with staff is that your goals have generally been aligned to a annual basis, whereas almost all of our reporting, being financial, as you saw this evening, our metrics and the like, are all on a fiscal year. As such, the recommendation in short order is that you, that you consider moving your goal-setting to cover a fiscal year. Therefore, it would align with budget, your reporting, and all your metrics. It would also, that, we feel that it would be beneficial in the long run to be more consistent that way. Secondly, involvement, where, I am suggesting that the involvement in this one, taking into accounts senior staff in the room as participants and subject matter specialists. That would allow council to ask questions, specific questions of the different staff members, and provide for more information and better understanding. And finally, the main question to you is the method. I've denoted in the, in the memo that there is generally two major ways. One is you get a third-party facilitator, and you spend approximately a day working on your annual goals. It's sometimes called your strategic goals, but can be named a number of things. But, the other one is to have a member of staff facilitate it, or, I guess, I, I have seen the mayor facilitate them before, too, but you, and then go about four, maybe five hours. It's a condensed version, it doesn't have as much process involved, it kind of gets down to the meat and potatoes of it pretty quickly. But, in order to move that forward, we'd kind of like your input and your direction on how you would like to see that done, based on the recommendations and your past prefer, past and current preferences. Thank you.
Comments? Anybody? Got any ideas? I think last year, we did it just on a Tuesday night, didn't we, a regular work session evening?
Yeah.
We just, we just said we're going to stay late, till we got it done?
We started early, and we wanted to...
Started, started early, came in...
Two to three hours at most, I think.
About three hours. We came in about, we came in about five, and had some...
Sandwiches.
Sandwiches, and...
Yeah.
And we came up with that list, and I don't know how great that is, but, is that a, are you happy with that approach? Let me, I mean, when Carter Napier was here, one time, we went to Thermopolis for two days.
No, thank you.
Okay? I mean, we, you know, hid out in a hotel...
Really?
You know, so that, you know, we could have this conversation without, you know, and we touched on all kinds of different things. We had several different speakers come in, and, and teach us, you know, legal stuff, and budgeting process, and, you know, that type of thing. I mean, we got pretty well-educated. I mean, it was fun to do, but, but it was, I mean, it was difficult, because we had, you know, there weren't very many people that could take two days out of their lives to go and do that.
Did the goals look something like that, or was there something about them that was different and special? And then, maybe being a little bit facetious, but I guess...
Why would you be that?
Yeah, but maybe you still come up with that same list.
That's kind of my thought.
Well, and I'm not sure that that changed the goals, but there was a, but it was like a, you know, big extended work session...
More of an educational session.
Educational, training, how boards operate, and, you know, that type of thing, and, and maybe some real in-depth information about, you know, water lines, and how the sewer plant works, and, you know, that type of thing, that, you know, made a, made a difference. But I, I think that, from the standpoint of establishing goals for the city, we're not in bad shape to do that. We could go ahead, and we could go ahead and do that. So, we could pick a, we could, could we just pick a, a fourth Tuesday?
Yes, Your Honor.
Well, and I got one other question.
Well, yeah, but he's, he's got one more question in there, was, how is that going to fit in the budget? He wants to postpone that, so that it's coincidental with budget.
No, no, it's the goals that drive the budget process. So, we got to have these, we have to do the goal-setting...
Before.
Before the budget process, okay?
All right, I misunderstood that.
So, we don't really change the time of the goal-setting session, but what we're focused on, instead of starting with the calendar year, is we're really saying, this should say fiscal year 1718.
Right.
Okay, and what we're going to work on is 1819 for fiscal year. So, that's kind of a...
And I guess, my question would be, Tony, are you expecting a more defined, specific set of goals than what we have in front of us? You think? I mean, are you looking for more out of that than this 30,000-foot level set of goals, as opposed to specific, we want to, we want to rebuild 25 percent of the streets in Riverton, Wyoming in the next fiscal year, kind of a thing?
Your Honor, if I may, the, what I would, what I would envision, or what I would recommend to you is, is to stay with the 30,000-foot goals. I believe that's important, I believe that's very much so where council has been, and does a good job of getting to it. However, some of the discussion, and maybe some of the metrics, I say that way too often, but some of the metrics or measured goals that are under that, probably require a little bit of discussion. And the reason is, when we talk about things like maintaining a sustainable budget, and maybe this was discussed, and I just don't have, I haven't seen it, a discussion of what is sustainable, is that, is that maintaining an 18 percent cash on hand, is that, what, at what standards are we going to be judged as a staff to what we bring in the decisions that we make? More so, and moreover, if we talk about infrastructure items, like talking about what we're going to do in that year, what we're planning, what staff is going to bring to you at the budget, because then you're going to look at it at the budget time and say, hey, we wanted to do our infrastructure, and you don't have an infrastructure project on here. That's a problem. But, or, okay, we wanted to do infrastructure, but you might want to not do 25 percent of the streets in the entire town in one year. In hands-to-city's image and beautification, some of them are broad and, and great goals, and we can easily believe in them, but sometimes they're harder to quantify for us as staff, so we can move forward and bring you certain projects. The entire town, doing beautification in the town as a whole is different, and in those cases, you can kind of get, okay, this over here, and this over here, whereas sometimes a little bit of focus can actually allow us, not greater ease, but more success, because we can focus our efforts, and it's not just what happens to pop up in front of us. Obviously, if something is great, and it's a, we can do a grant for exactly this, and maybe it doesn't exactly align, but hey, that's a great beautification process, that's a win, too. It doesn't mean we forego anything else, but it does allow us to focus our efforts a bit. So, to your question, I'm sorry, I'm long-winded there, was simply that maybe a little bit of definition on a number of them might help us a little bit. I'm used, I'm used to developing goal sets that say, we want to improve our walkability. On our walkability, we are going to seek design of, you know, seek design of this, and look towards developing a set of, in-house trail plan that says, here's where we're thinking about it, so now we can focus on it a little bit later. It doesn't mean always going to, to an architect, or an engineer, but it, sometimes it just means getting a plan together internally. Additionally, you may want to consider, this is a larger conversation, but part of your, you're about 12 years out of your original master plan, and it was updated about two years after its adoption, so that's been since about 2009, those are about every 10 years, when you actually do a full rewrite. So, those play into your long-term goals and discussions, but, I mean, not trying to get into that whole thing right now, but just to give you an idea, a little more definition might be suggested.
So, I guess, to follow up that, I, I would think, if we're going to get more in the weeds than we did with this one, we might need a little more time. So, I mean, I, I would think we could maybe plan a half a day, as opposed to a few hours in the evening, if that's what we're going to try to do. I, I don't see this, I think it might be a struggle to get everybody together for two days, you know?
Could we split it up?
I just remember trying to get everybody together for an afternoon to do interviews, and that was tough.
Right. Could we, could we split it up? To where, say, we would take a, each, each Tuesday evening as part of our work session, we would spend some time working on, on, on these, so that we can say, okay, so recreation and community development, that was our goal, one of our goals from last year, okay? So, what has happened with that? So, we could have a report about that, and then we could say, what do we want to do about that? Okay?
What part do we want to extend?
Right, right.
Or diminish?
Or, I see a problem on here, we wanted, one of the things we wanted to do is continue the efforts of Volunteers of Americas, and the Solutions Committee, and other agencies to address substance abuse and homelessness, and the Solutions Committee was something that was a, was Mike Broadhead's deal, and, and we haven't, the Solutions Committee probably doesn't exist anymore. See? And so, then we'd need to get some kind of feedback on that, and figure out, how are we going to address this issue, if that's not going to be a viable approach?
Your, Your Honor, based on the fact that you went from, you started at about 5:00 or so, in your previous ones, and you just were willing to go late, the idea of working... Um, the idea of working, I would imagine, if, if I were to coordinate it, that a session like that followed by a second session at the next work session, say, or at, at, at just a slightly later time to say, okay, here's what we put together, here's what we're proposing to you as, as, as staff to go along with it, that you could actually do it within your about five-hour timeframe. I think it can, I think it can work.
And one thing, I, we spent, well, at least I did, I spent probably two or three hours, if not more, before we actually met with the planning of what my thoughts were. And he had us come up with, and this was Gary, he had us come up with what, four or five things that we would like to see on the, on the goals. And then they were kind of hashed out and brought forth. I mean, so it, it, it was a lot more than just, and we sat in the same room for that long, but it was.
We grouped them though, remember?
Yeah, it was several more hours prior to that leading up to it, so.
Yeah, I thi, I think they had us, um, give a list of five things we wanted to see, kind of a deal.
Yeah, and then.
Brought them all together and.
That way, if me and Mike had the same thing, well, you know, that's, that's fifty percent.
But I guess, does anybody have a problem with doing one of these, maybe come early and go a little late work session?
No, the evenings, the evenings work.
Or would you rather try to do, let's say, you know, a Friday afternoon or a whatever afternoon or a Saturday morning or, you know, whatever. We gotta come up with what, a good half a day kind of a thing, whether we do that from five to nine or whether we do it from noon to five sometime. Right? Is that?
I think the idea of two work sessions that are pretty similar to what we had before would be good. I think that'd be a good way to go. And, and I, and I like the idea of splitting it up a little bit too, because we did have that chance to kind of put our own thoughts together and then come together and, and put them together, but that'd give us a chance to get our own together and then come together and then come together and rethink it a little bit. I think part of, even when we set these goals, the intention to begin with was to have this broader goal and then something that was more quantifiable under it. We didn't quite end up like that, but that's what we had started discussing was the idea of something broad, kind of like we were saying, which is what we have here, and then some quantifiable ones under that. Um, but I, I think two, two nights is good. I like the idea of, you know, we've done it at the beginning of the year, but it, you know, by the time we got to the budgeting point, we, these were a little old. So it might not be bad even to do it a little bit later. I mean, I know that we had talked about that and it's still more towards the beginning of the year, but I wouldn't have a problem with doing this just a little bit closer to budgeting, um, so that it's a little bit fresher in the mind and can be something that we look at as we're looking at the budget to make sure that we're meeting it.
So that's March?
We did our preliminary budget, uh, one-on-one with our supervisors, April fifth last year.
Okay, so March would.
March would be, yeah, the latest that you probably would want to try to get to.
There's, there's five Tuesdays in January.
Your Honor, if I may, um, what, generally speaking, the process, I agree with you that if we send out some information and get something from you beforehand, um, it, it, it significantly shortens the amount of time that we have to take as a group in developing just the basic categories. You can walk into the room and we can have those generally lumped together for you. Okay, here's infrastructure-driven or here's, um, here's department-driven. We could look at it a number of ways, depending on what those desires were from counsel. Um, so that, that's going to give us a lot, a lot of time. The other way you can do it, that is always a little bit of fun, is everybody gets ten little sticky notes and here are the things and let's vote on what's important. And that tends to be another way to whittle things down a little quick, a little quicker too. But those are all methods. We don't need to get into those now.
So.
We would be happy to provide it anytime in February. Uh, i- if we did it in February, we would be able to get something, provide it back, provide it back to you, say, is this what you want in a final format? You adopt it and then we're using it as we go into the new budget, uh, new budget development process. So while you won't see those goals, um, as part of your, uh, the latter part of the budget, we're going to be using them to actually drive our expenditures, or we would hope to.
So I guess that, so it's February, if we did the, the two work sessions in February? So the second, the second and fourth Tuesdays. Now, one, one thing that we kind of talked about was whether or not we wanted senior staff in the room.
I actually, and we didn't do that last time.
We didn't.
It could be good. Uh, I do think that it would get in a little bit into like Mike was saying, into the weeds a little bit, which if we want to do that, that could be good. It, it would help with some of the, if we do want to get more quantifiable goals, it could help to have them there, is my thought.
What if we invite them to the second session? We come up with a preliminary, big picture for the first one, and then everybody has those two weeks to kind of review it and put their thoughts to it and then invite senior staff to the second one just for clarification on what we come up with in our, our two weeks of thinking about, Mike really had a good idea, or wow, that really sounded stupid after I read it the next day.
So that you're saying like the first week would maybe look like, more like this, and we could take it to senior staff and say, can you give us some quantifiable things that you think fit within this that we can have?
That they think is, that they think is attainable.
Mm-hmm.
Because we, like Mike said, we're thirty thousand feet and if they're coming in fifteen thousand feet, they can come up with something a bit more attainable to her. If we say, you know, beautify the area, they can come in and say, you know, we'd really like to, you know, Kyle has a chance to sit on the fork committee. He could say, you know, we could really do a lot of good things down here. And that's something that we could kind of drill down a little bit closer. Cause I, my fear is just if we get fifteen people in a room and we try to do a goal-setting, uh, I think that we're gonna be four hours and we're still gonna be talking in circles.
I like that as a general kind of format to it.
Okay.
Do we run into issues with senior staff working after hours?
We don't get paid hourly.
Well, I know, but then we start going to overtime and stuff like that. Is that gonna be, Mia, is that gonna get into our budget? I'm, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
We, we don't need into overtime.
So we, if we can carry these out till ten PM every night, it's not a big deal to them.
Perfect, yeah. My, my pay's the same regardless.
I hope everybody was able to see Dave Paskett's face right when you said that. I'd like a picture of that.
When, when are we hiring that new guy?
He said, I was looking over there to see your reaction.
Mike?
Again, question, Tony, were you planning on getting a facilitator or what was your thought process on that?
Your Honor, um, if I may, the, honestly, if we're going to do the shorter multiple one, then no. One, they're gonna be about two thousand dollars, uh, fifteen hundred. You can get them less, you can, but, um, ultimately, if you would like uh, either myself or someone else to do it, or we can try to find somebody that, uh, just to general, be a general facilitator in the room, that's your choice. I'll be happy to do it. I've done them before. Um, everybody here knows it better than I, uh, knows the projects and the history better than I do at this point, so I have no doubt that I can get us to a point in that role, uh, where we can bring it back to staff and then also staff could bring something forward. Um, when they meet with you and say, here are some of our ideas. I think we can do that, if that's your preference.
Couldn't be any worse. Well, those guys weren't fantastic. I mean.
Well, yeah.
Well, it's one of those, i- if we're not looking for glitz and glamour and big production and fancy reports, we're looking for getting down to the nuts and bolts, I think. And so, I think as long as, a- again, I've sat through enough of them, I could almost do it probably too. And it's really, it's just getting all the ideas out there and letting everybody look at them, digest them, sort them down into five overall things and get some specifics and so.
The hardest part is just keeping us focused.
Yeah, yeah.
Come back.
And that's where the food helps.
Yes.
I mean, when you're eating, it's harder to talk.
So, so we're gonna do this on the, on February thirteenth and twenty-seventh?
The two work sessions, we would have two work sessions in February, yes, sir.
Okay.
I am gonna be gone for the twentieth meeting, but.
But you'll be here for the work session.
I'll be here for the work session.
See there.
Well, that's okay.
That's all that matters.
Okay.
So, Your Honor, if I may, we, we will do it the second and fourth Tuesday. Staff will facilitate. Uh, first meeting will be, and I'm assuming we're, we're doing in the evenings as denoted usual, no different times. Um, it will be counsel and the administrat, uh, counsel and the administrator for the first one, and then senior staff for the second one. And during that interim time period, we will try to develop some sub-goals or sub-ideas to provide for the second one, finalize at the second one and bring it forward at the first meeting in March for your final approval.
Okay. All right. And then, and then I could make a suggestion that maybe senior staff could take a look at the goals that we have right now and then kind of put together a little list of accomplishments that would fit under each of those goals.
Your Honor, yes, we will. Um, would you also like suggestions in terms of, uh, goals that staff would suggest on the onset for you to consider?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
I think that'd be fine, to get some input that direction. Then we can talk about it and then we'll have, and then we'll have another session two weeks later with them present. We'll go through all that. We can probably get things pretty well nailed down.
I like it. Some input on the front end and on the back end, I think that could be very helpful.
That'd be very helpful.
And a good review of what we've done so far, so we can get an idea of, was this way too high of a goal and?
It does us, it does us very little good to sit here around the council table and, and establish goals when, when the city doesn't have the equipment or the manpower or the funding or the whatever it is that it takes to accomplish that. So I think we need to have that input, that information, so that we're kind of grounded before we, before we set something in place. Okay? Sound good?
If you like it, I love it.
Okay, we're all fired up for February then?
Always.
Always. Dynamite.
Hardest month of the year.
Okay, so that's gonna, that's gonna be, that's, that's not very far away, actually.
No.
So, okay. Thank you for, uh, your efforts tonight. Thanks, Mia, for your presentation and, and work that you've done on this. And, uh, it gives us confidence that, uh, we're headed in the right direction. Okay? Sounds like we're not falling off the cliff or anything like that. So we're in good shape. Okay? So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, Mike?
Um, in your report to us, your weekly report, you had mentioned that the city had prevent, presented comments to Fremont County Solid Waste District regarding their flow control, um, idea. I guess what were our comments to them?
Your Honor, if I may, um, going off of memory right now, uh, they were prepared by Public Works Director Butterfield. He can speak to them. However, um, one of them was that it, uh, in, with, with regard to flow control, it does limit the, uh, ability for the municipalities to make decisions as to the, at the disposal of their waste. So it limits your ability as a council to say, we're going to do this, or we're gonna do that, we're gonna make an incinerator, we're going to haul here or haul there. Um, you're restricted much the same way that citizens are restricted within our community to per, to purchase water a certain way or the like. It's not, it's, it's, it's not a unique situation, but it was one of the concerns that we wanted to provide. I know there was a second one. Um, do you remember what that one was?
I was looking it up right now.
Okay. Um, the main one was that it limits council's ability to make choices with regard to the disposal of waste which we collect and are responsible for. Um, that was the main one. I can provide counsel and a copy of those without a problem.
I guess basically I'm just looking, we are against that policy?
No, um, Your Honor, no. We weren't saying we were inherently against a policy. The, the comment period was such that, um, they were, uh, they had, they were looking to pass that and they needed to, uh, they needed to accept comments. We couldn't ultimately tell them they could or couldn't do it. But we, we said, these are the concerns that we have. These are the things that we want to bring up to your attention that would give anybody distinct concern.
So, so again, along that same line, so, so as the city of Riverton, we're saying it gives us some concern that you're gonna do this, because that limits our options.
Your Honor, yes, that does, yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
Yeah, I guess, and I realize we do have some similar policies myself, but then my other question, and it might be beyond your knowledge or whatever, but does that board alone have the ability to set that policy without any input from the citizens or the taxpayers?
Yes, they do, and have been doing.
I would defer, I would defer to our public works director.
Your Honor, that, that question was something we were concerned with as well, and we did a little bit of legal research. Um, excuse me. Flow control has been an issue, um, on the national level for several years. It's gone to the Supreme Court on two different occasions. The Supreme Court has ruled, in two opposite ways, uh, when considering flow control. But, uh, it's important to note that when it was brought to the Supreme Court, uh, they were considering the inner, um, basically the, the Commerce Clause. And so whether or not it addressed the authority of a district to implement it, the Supreme Court did not address that. However, the, the legal standing that they're utilizing, and this is weird talking with an attorney on the, the council, is the same standing that we use under the Health, Safety and Welfare Clause. And they're saying, um, that a flow control policy best protects the health, safety and welfare of those that are serviced within the district. That's the means by which they implement a flow control policy. That's how it's been used in other states nationwide since the mid-eighties. Um, and just to, to reiterate what, um, Mr. Toll said, had said, um, in the letter I proposed, uh, we brought up two concerns. Uh, the first is that the flow control resolution imposes flow control in perpetuity. This restricts the ability of future councils or administrators of the city of Riverton to make decisions regarding its sanitation operations. The second was, uh, what involvement will stakeholders have in the increase or reduction of fees assessed by the district? Uh, essentially, once in place, flow control creates a de facto monopoly and therefore we have, uh, very little control about the fees that we pay. Those were the two primary issues that we raised when we commented, um, to their proposal.
Well, yeah, and I guess that's the part that is extremely concerning to me, because again, we've had a presentation from a potential competitor of theirs to be able to save the city money on its trash costs. And I know also that there is another company that was looking at putting in a transfer station that would also be able to save even more than the previous one that we had come offered to us. And, and so this is gonna cost the city money, period. And again, then you get into the whole monopolistic thing, and I realize governments have to be monopolistic in some manner. But to me, when it gets down to them competing with industry, and the only way they have to compete is to make themselves a monopoly, it's a little bit ridiculous in my, you know, thoughts. And, and I guess trash is one of those things that is not always just a government entity that operates them. There's many places where private companies operate landfills and all that kind of stuff. And, and so, uh, again, I think, and, and I think you probably did a good job in explaining that to them, but to me, it's, it's not right. And so, it, it was really concerning to me when I saw that.
Go ahead, Kyle.
The, what I've got from their meetings. We, um, first off, we have a conflict of interest. We have a attorney for the solid waste who is our attorney. Okay? Next, next off, uh, primary before the last election, the EPA of Wyoming had stated that Lander landfill was gonna be closed at two thousand twenty-four. End of discussion. It didn't matter whether it had reached its capacity or not. It was closed. It didn't matter whether it had reached its capacity or not, it was closed. So, we came to the point where they went to the cupboard to see how much money they're gonna have to have to cover that up by two thousand and twenty-four, and it was vacant. So, then they started collecting monies. Right now, they have neighborhood about fifteen million. It's gonna cost us, for the three landfills that they're putting under, Shoshone, Dubois, and one other, about eighteen million dollars. So, they decided to truck, this gives the control, they decided to truck Riverton garbage to Lander. The reason for it wasn't gas-wise, it was to utilize the capacity before the magic date of twenty-four.
Right.
After the election, imaginably, things happened differently. The view got so clear that they could determine that, in fact, Lander wasn't gonna close in two thousand and twenty-four, it would be thirty-five or thereabouts, and Riverton's landfill would be two thousand fifty or two thousand seventy-five, and I thought to myself, well, that kind of alleviates my problem, and so, there's a lot of ethereal work on that. The biggest problem was, they were telling us here that they could crush garbage better with a haul pack or a tractor with studs on it than they could the compactor. Well, the actual fact was, electricity to run the compactor was more expensive than diesel, so they, that's why they shut that down. The, the, there wasn't a soft start mechanism for that compactor here in Riverton, and so the electric bill was astronomical. Well, so, the, the, the feel of what we can and we can't do, there, we're in this improvement district, and we're there, and they just dictate to us, 'cause we're part of them, and no matter if we did ship it out, let's say we got somebody to take it for fifty-five dollars a ton, they would still have, what, three meals?
Well, yeah, they're still getting paid on the mill levy, plus the tonnage.
Without taking any garbage.
Without taking any garbage, right, right.
So...
But I mean, Casper landfill charges fifty bucks a ton.
Well, they're not, they're, they're not building a nest egg like these guys are.
Well, I, I understand, but still, guess what? If, if you can buy a loaf of bread for a dollar here and two dollars here, which one are you gonna buy?
Well, it's like buying gas from Bailey's or buying somebody else's, you know, you know, you've told us they'll go a mile for a penny.
So, maybe I should institute a flow control?
Yeah.
Little America.
Oh, wow, isn't that, isn't that fun? Well, I mean, we do have a, the city of Riverton does have an alternative.
Right.
Let's get out of the business.
Yeah, that, that would be our option, let it not be our problem anymore.
That's right, just get out of the business, and, and certainly then Riverton would no longer be a cash cow for the, in their, in their words, a cash cow.
We are.
What if they put that policy in place, whoever decided to come to do business would have to take it to Fremont County, they wouldn't have a choice to haul it to Casper, let's say.
Yeah, but it'd be, I, I think the, I think it'd be a fraction of the cost, I don't know. Hard to tell. Lander certainly doesn't, you know...
Yeah, they don't deal with trash.
They don't deal with trash, and, and, you know, and I have talked to people that say, gee, I can, I can go out there once a month for five dollars, and don't, so, that's, you know, that's, that isn't a bad thing. Okay, did you have something else besides that, Mike?
I think that was it.
Okay.
Sorry to extend the meeting.
Okay, that's all right, that's what we're here for, is to learn and talk about stuff. Anybody else got anything before we quit, then, before I ask for that motion?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Move and seconded in favor?
Aye.